Join us in our invocation. God of all life, you call us to live in community and just care for one another. We pray for those whose position and authority affect the lives of others. Please inspire them with a vision of the community as it might be. Where love of neighbor and concern for one another drive our out discontent and strife, anxiety, and fear. Help us all to work together with one heart and will, with sympathy and understanding to serve the common good, to minister to people in trouble and despair, and to multiply true happiness among us. In your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, Monday, November 20, 2017, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Here.
We have quorum. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and the Committee of the Whole Recap. We're going to test our policy of not amending the agenda right off the bat. I've invited some friends to give us an update on their best robotics competition, and so we would need to add that to the agenda under petitions and communications. But in order to do that, we'll need a motion to add best robotics update to petitions and communications.
I'll make that because I owe them.
Second, Your Honor. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Jim. And it needs to be unanimous vote in order to add anything to the agenda. So here comes a true test, best robotics. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, you're on the agenda. Under the Committee of the Whole, does anyone else have anything else, any additions or corrections?
Your Honor, perhaps you could just, we should talk about the renaissance of Fargo.
Direct that to the next Committee of the Whole.
Can.
Could that be a good point to talk about that? Okay, we'll put that on the Committee of the Whole. So for the Committee of the Whole recap, Andrew, did you want to, did you have some notes or did you want to just recap it? We talked about committees and combining committees and the role of committees.
Yeah, there's not a lot to add to that. Mayor and council went through the different various committees and talked about some that are having issues and the ones that are working well. Council had a good discussion and staff will bring that discussion back with a further recommendation on how we should move forward into 2018 with our roles and commissions. I really appreciate all of the good dialogue and discussion, and I think it was very helpful. And we'll come back, like I said, with our recommendations.
Thank you, Andrew. With that, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda. Make that motion. Thank you, Brent. Your second.
I'll make it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The same sign, motion carries. Under public hearings, we will have HRA's Small Cities Development Program Grant Hearing. And Michael and Jeff are both here from the HRA. Did one of you want to speak to the issue before we open the hearing?
Sure.
Describe the issue for the council.
Mayor and council members, thanks for having us. My name is Mike Olson. I'm the rehab specialist at Fergus Falls HRA, and we have a Small Cities Development Program Grant open currently in Fergus Falls. It runs from Stanton Avenue to Seventh Avenue and from Vine Street to Buse. This rehab grant has been open for a couple of years. One of the program requirements is that we have two public hearings while the grant is open. This is our second.
Okay.
So.
With that, I will open the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the issue, step to the lectern and state your name. See none, I'll close the hearing. And it's back to the councils. Does the council have any questions for Jeff or Michael from the HRA? I don't believe there's any action that the city needs to take. It's just simply hold a public hearing, is that correct? Hope we've done that. Thank you. There are no bids to award this evening. Under petitions and communications, we'll ask for an update from Elizabeth Grothberg on the best robotics competition.
So, we had our local competition on October 28th, and when we competed there, we won. So, six teams then move on to regionals, and that is December 1st. So, we're coming up to that shortly. It's a Friday, and we'll be competing against 36 teams from Ohio, Pennsylvania, Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota.
That's great. Well, we wish you the best of luck. I believe there was one award that was given out to the best teacher or the teacher of the year.
Yes.
Is that correct? That go to your mother, Diane Grothberg? All right, well, best of luck to the best robotics team, and let us know how you do.
Thank you.
December 1st, is it in Fargo? Where's it at? The regional competition's in Fargo, at NDSU?
At the Shack.
At the Shack in Fargo on December 1st, Friday. So, again, best of luck.
Thank you.
There is no open forum this evening. Under item H, the consent agenda, there's a number of items on the consent agenda. You have a copy in your packet as well as a copy on the projectors. If there's any items that anyone would like to remove from that consent agenda, Anthony?
Could I remove 3 and 4?
3 and 4? Is there anything else? If not, is there a resolution to approve the consent agenda minus items 3 and 4?
Some of them.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
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 Yes. The resolution is approved. Item number 3 is, will require a resolution certifying the delinquent utility accounts. Anthony, did you have a question on that or a comment?
Question. Obviously, there's a number of businesses on the delinquent, unless I want to read out their names, but like, some of them are kind of pretty spendy, you know, like $1,500 and $2,000. I mean, and I mean, you've got City Bakery, you've got Waste Management under Herburgers, and then Leech Backhoe, Sarah Lee, McDonald's, Big Red Box, and then, you know, Town and Country Order Glass, Republic Services, Waste Management again, Waterproof and Tech. I just wonder, like, where are those bills coming from? It just seemed bad that a business wouldn't pay a bill, that's all.
Yeah, and on some of those, you know, if they have a management company doing some of that billing for them, that company very likely could be paying that management company, and the management company has not paid us yet. We experienced that sum, so we even send letters locally as well as to that management company to make sure the local people know, hey, your bill's not being paid to us by the company you hired to pay us. So we try to communicate that. Some of the other large ones are probably for some landfill accounts. You have a contractor or someone going out to our landfill.
Yep.
So, as of last Wednesday, when we put this together, we put everything on the list that, and we go ahead and now, after this council meeting, we'll send out letters, final collection letters, basically, because we've been sending them monthly. We'll send those letters out and say, you have to pay us probably by, you know, November 30th or, you know, I'll have to think through the date we'll set.
A business date, anyway.
But with the statement that they will go on your taxes if they're not paid. So, we typically collect quite a bit between now and the end of the year, but this is our process. We've got to get the list in front of you, and ultimately, if they're not paid, they'll go on their taxes next year.
Right, and then, I follow the question on that, then. I mean, like, some of them obviously require a license to do work in Fergus.
Yep.
I mean, so, do we have any leverage where, you know, if you don't pay your bill, then can we not renew their, you know, contractor license or operator license?
You're reading my mind. We just talked about that this morning, and, yeah, we wanted to alert, make sure the people at our landfill, at our front desk, so we all know who we're talking about if it's someone with a license. And we'd have to work through legal channels on that, but, yeah, we need to get their attention and make sure that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're working on that and thinking along that line as well.
Right.
But we'd work with City Attorney's Office to make sure we can do some of that, so.
And then, can I ask my question on item 4?
Go ahead.
And then I'll do a resolution approving them. Obviously, on the second one, which is, was special assessments, is that because they get applied this year and therefore they have to go through this process to get put on their property tax versus them being delinquent?
Well, these are the billings that we sent out the end of August. They're due by the end of September, so this list is anything that was not paid from the current year billings.
Right.
So, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but we bill everything here out of City Hall.
Yeah.
A lot of cities have the counties do their billing, but we bill annually, so anything not paid here is this, the 2017 current year payment that didn't get paid.
Right, and do we send them another red letter then, or not?
No, not on these assessments, because we've already went through that billing process with them, and these just go up to the county. We will have a number, just from past experience, that are going to come in and pay before they go to the county. However, the penalty is already applied of 10%.
Right.
For late payment. So they are paying 10% more on these special assessments, but, yeah, we're not going to go through and send out another billing to them.
And then if it goes on to their property tax, then how long does it typically take to pay it off?
Typically, then it's paid in the year 2018.
So they get billed the whole lot?
Right. The whole works goes on in one year. Then it depends if our, the only time we wouldn't get that is if there's delinquent taxes or they're not paying their tax bill completely then.
Right. Okay, thank you, Bill, for the explanation.
Yep.
With that, I'll make a recommendation to approve item 3 and 4, the resolutions certifying delinquent utility accounts and delinquent special assessment accounts.
Second? I'll second that, Your Honor. Thank you, Darren. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, we'll need a first reading of ordinance 647 series, amending City Code 2.51, Committee of the Whole meetings. I'll ask Rolfe to address that if he needs to. It's regarding what we talked about at our last Committee of the Whole meeting.
That's correct. That's correct, and there's one amendment that we will be making to it. The city administrator wanted to basically have Committee of the Whole meetings meet the Wednesday before every council meeting. The way the ordinance is presented to you tonight is that it would, the set schedule would be the first Wednesday for the first council meeting, but in looking at setting dates for Committee of the Whole meetings, most likely every, you're going to need two of those meetings a month. And so that's the suggested change that I would incorporate into the ordinance, and that will be presented to you at the next meeting, but you can certainly introduce the ordinance tonight.
I will introduce that, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Been introduced, thank you, Jim and Scott. Item number 2 is a resolution authorizing grant project for state library construction grant. Aaron, I think you have some good news for us.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am happy to relay that the city has been offered a $1 million state library construction grant. And there are some end grant agreement requirements for us to secure this grant, and so, there's a memo in your packet, and one of those requirements is to enact a resolution that authorizes that the city owns the building and the site for the project, and also that the city will follow the assurances that are in the grant application and end grant agreement. So, I'm here before you this evening to share that good news and request the needed resolution. And I'll just, also just want to say a thank you to our legislatures who signed on to this bill, supporting funds for the library construction grant program. So, I thank you to them as well.
Thank you, Aaron. Is there a resolution, Jim? I bet you'd be happy to offer that, wouldn't you? Yes, I would.
I'll second.
Second, is there any questions for Aaron? And is that, is the state, is the state legislature, the state library board, they're going to do a formal announcement of who receives those awards?
Right, so right now, we can say that we've been offered this grant. Once we have all of the final paperwork in, we will be able to say we've received it, and we can do some press releases.
Sure.
And acknowledge the source of funding when we talk about the library project funding.
Certainly, okay. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Aaron?
Congrats.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $2,637,864.98, and if there's any questions, we'll direct them to our finance director, Bill Sonmore. If not...
I got a question.
It was so nice you not being here last time.
My question was, obviously, we have a bill from Stantec for $15,653.76, and obviously, they caused us some grief with Schipol, and I just wanted to know, are they going to compensate us or give us some sort of, you know, I mean, we spent a lot of money with Stantec over the course of this whole project with the RTC, and, you know, I'd like to see a discussion withheld from staff with Stantec on how are they going to compensate us and make it right for the delay with Schipol and not getting the paperwork to them in time.
Your Honor, members, Hix, we'd be glad to have that discussion with Stantec. We've got some meetings scheduled with them here in the next week, and certainly, we'll address that with them.
So.
Questions? If not...
Question, are we able to hold back on that bill and not pay it until that discussion?
I'd like to have a discussion first before, because I think there's a little more information to set between the parties at play than just them, so I'd like them to have an opportunity to speak to it too as well.
But that's not the final payment?
It's not the final bill, anyway, so there'll be another bill.
Yeah, it's not the final bill, but...
But I agree with you. I'm one that advocates not paying people until you get their attention.
That's a council decision, and I'd like to certainly speak...
Then I would, I would make the recommendation that we pay the bills minus Stantec's $15,653.76.
Second that. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hix.
Yes. Resolution is approved. Item K is the board committee and department reports, and we'll have a resolution to adopt the final Wright Park plan. Guy, are you going to speak to this?
Thank you, Your Honor. The park board did meet last week and looked at the Wright Park plan as presented to the council, September, maybe? I can't remember the date of that, but there weren't any changes in that plan that you saw to the plan that the park board saw, and they are just recommending to you for its final approval.
Final approval, okay. Any questions, the council? If not, is there a resolution to accept that final plan? Darren? Thank you.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
I'll second that, Your Honor. Thank you, Justin. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hix.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Item number, or, yeah, item L is reports from staff and administrative officers, and I believe we'll need a resolution directing staff, but to work with EIC regarding the H2M communication strategy. Amy, did you want to speak to this, please?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'll give you some background information, and then there has been a bit of a change from, it's outlined in the memo in front of you, but from what was initially discussed two weeks ago at the city council meeting. As you recall, the EIC is, had identified communications and marketing as a priority in a planning session over the summer, and as we talked about at the last city council meeting, they were going to be considering a proposal at their meeting last week, which did take place, and specifically, a strategy from H2M, a firm that does have a local office here in Fergus Falls, was reviewed. Key elements of this strategy that was presented was to host a discovery meeting to identify the specific goals and objectives of the work, and as well as swat information that would be relevant as they would develop a strategy. Review of key drivers, stakeholders, other communications, current communications, and an understanding of the current culture and brand, and then ultimately creating a marketing communication statements and positioning that would include the specific positioning statements for various stakeholders, communication objectives, public relations strategy, media recommendations, and ultimately, concepts for those planned communications or campaigns. So that was the broad strategy that the EIC looked at and was in support of. What additionally was discussed was, are there immediate strategies that could or should be undertaken in light of the Target Store closing announcement? And H2M was able to provide some suggestions of what that could look like, and that was reviewed by the EIC as well. And some of those immediate strategies would include a position or call to action for Fergus Falls that would be focused on recruiting and supporting our existing businesses, drafting of messages that could be used to communicate to our current businesses and others about why are, why are they here, why are we here, and where is the community going, so that there's a clear understanding of the trajectory that the community is on today, and then specific collateral material that could be used for the various audience groups. And so after discussion at the EIC, they approved pursuing a contract with H2M for that general communication strategy that was initially contemplated, and then suggested that the city of Fergus Falls consider actually entertaining the option of entering into a retainer contract with H2M to address those more immediate strategies that were outlined just prior. So, that's kind of the overview of what they had. The EIC does have funds available for that general communication strategy, and the city has $15,000 budgeted in communications for both 2017, that is still available, and an additional $15,000 budgeted in 2018. And this would be sufficient to engage H2M on both those immediate strategies, and then as well as provide funding to support the overall communication strategy that would come out of the EIC contract should this move forward as anticipated. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The retainer that was suggested was around $1,000 a month to look over the next year for those services, so, but that, I believe, is negotiable, so, wouldn't get too fixed on that number. You'd want to really assure what, maybe have a not-to-exceed annual budget potentially would be an option.
And the scope of work with them, with the management? Any questions from the council? Anthony, you were at the EIC and you were at the meeting, do you have anything to add?
I can, Your Honor. I think, you know, obviously, the EIC was looking at a more general kind of philosophy, but then, you know, one of the, one of the concerns we had was that, you know, we should also communicate with other businesses in town to let them know what the city is trying to accomplish and where it's going, and the increases in population and the lessening of the tax base, and we don't do a very good job of that necessarily. So, there could be other businesses out there that, you know, don't know where Fergus is presently, and that we should have, you know, information that is common and we all know what it is, and so that we can actually get out there and try to avoid another business saying, you know, making the announcement, we're going to close because, you know, Fergus is going nowhere, when it's actually the opposite. So, and the EIC has obviously funds to do part of it, but it obviously doesn't have funds to do the other, and we felt it was something that the city could participate in, and that we would get, you know, obviously twice as much bang for our buck, as it were, if we did it this way.
Sorry. So, yes, Rod?
Yeah, just maybe to Anthony also, is that, there's some funds available in the EIC to start out with, is that you said?
Correct.
For the broad, for the $15,000 contract for the broad marketing.
And then the next two years, and we discussed this, Jim, you were in on the tax when we talked about the communications, setting aside that money. And Bill, does this fit into our larger picture then of that, how we view that set aside?
Because what we did is we, we moved $15,000 in this year, 2017, so you'd have some money to work with, and then we did reallocate in the 18 budget, we'll come around and put 15 in there, so you have 30 total to work with at this point.
And the total we'd be looking at about would be...
On the city would be 12, 12, give or take, depending on negotiated scope of work with them there.
Okay.
Exceed, language maybe.
So, yeah, so the, the ask is for approximately 12,000, now about 30,000?
To enter any negotiations, to come back with, yeah, with the contract.
And obviously, we'd have to have that discussion with H2M and come back to the council with a, with a contract.
For a final approval of a contract, yeah. So I think the first thing we'd do is we'd entertain a motion directing staff to work with the EIC regarding H2M communication strategy. That's the broad overarching $15,000 contract, and that's just asking staff to...
I'll move that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Rod. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The second, I guess, would be a motion, I probably could have done with one, but anyway, a motion directing staff to enter into negotiations and to come back with a contract for a, because we don't know the exact amount, so we can't have a resolution of accepting the contract.
For a communication initiative, yeah.
Retainer to address items, if that makes sense?
May I suggest, Your Honor, members of the council, that the action potentially be not to exceed, say, $1,500 a month, just so we have the latitude to enter into it and start, and the reason being is we want to get ahead of this and be proactive, like you said, to the, to the business community right now, who's kind of looking around, wondering what just happened. And I think that the sooner we can get this work done, the better, for the sake of messaging. So if we could set a not-to-exceed monthly retainer amount, I think that would be helpful, and just being able to negotiate that and then move forward. And the reason I mention 1,500 is the original communications from H2M said 1,000 to 1,500 a month, so we'll likely settle less than that, but need that latitude.
So that would be a resolution that enters...
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Darren, thank you. Jim, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
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 Speedo.
Yes.
Hix.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Thank you, Amy. You're up next, though. Under Old and Unfinished Businesses, we'll have an update on the downtown riverfront master plan.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, council members. On the downtown and riverfront master plan, we are proceeding to get a final draft document. We've seen components of it, and just waiting for the consultant to provide us that final physical piece for ultimate review through staff, and then come through the final approval process. We would anticipate going to Planning Commission and City Council in December at this point, if we get the document yet this week, so that is our goal that we're working towards.
So, potentially December 4th, or the first, the first Monday in December? Or a final approval?
Or City Council would be December 18th.
Second meeting, okay.
Yeah, so we want to have plenty of time for the council to see it in advance of the council meeting.
Okay, sure. Any questions? Amy? Thank you, Amy.
Thanks.
And item number 2, under Old and Unfinished Businesses' request to salvage objects from
Yeah, thank you, and good evening, your honor. Per that November sixth open forum request in regards to salvaging some items for the Phase One demolition projects, that's the RTC, that was made by the Spring Board for the Arts, and in conjunction, I believe, with Otter Tail County Historical Society and other members. Memo in front of you, I went back to the project specifications in regards to the selected demolition. If you see items, notes E and F, essentially, the owner can specify, can reserve salvage rights and indicate what items they would like to save. That's typically time council, time capsules, if evident, building corners, dedication plaques, things of that nature. The only, the owner has the right to do that, however, it'd be best to specify that in the contract documents. I'm reviewing the list, what was provided by the Spring Board for Arts, and I'd have to say, in my opinion, it's pretty much, that's pretty more extensive. And some of the things noted, and I know this is just a list and everything, but some of the tile, wood banisters, purple glass from Skyway tunnels, that's, that type of salvaging operation would take a lot of equipment. And a little equipment and skilled labor to actually remove it intact. It's pretty intensive to do things like that, however, not impossible. Regardless of how the council wishes to proceed, I, I would suggest that all items are done through the contract. That's for a lot of liability purposes, and just for functionality as well. So I have two options. Option number one is do nothing. In this case, we just stick with the same specifications. The contractor does have the ability to contact a prime contractor if awarded, and they can enter into negotiate their own terms. I just want to stress, so that happens commonly that I've seen. However, the city has no leverage against the contractor if those two parties, prime contractor and party, if they can't come to any terms. The other option would be to issue a project addendum. This would consist of, as I said, issuing addendum, however, designating precise, or as best we can, what items in all Phase One the city would like to salvage, and then have the contractor salvage those items with their, their, their labor and materials, and then deliver it to a specified site by the owner. One other thing we need to discuss, so if that's the wish is we can do that through the contract, however, if we have to declare this material surplus material, or what we would have to do by means of giving it to a nonprofit or anything like that, that's perhaps more of a question Ralph can speak to, that's another item we need to discuss as well. So at this time, I just opened it for discussion, how the council would like to proceed moving forward. But keep in mind, if, if the council does proceed with some of these items, I would prefer that it moves quite quickly so we can issue an addendum, because bids are supposed to be open in January eighteenth. The contractors, the contractors did, we did do a pre-walkthrough of all the tunnels and a majority of all these items as well, so it's in the city's best interest, too, to express what items are salvaged, because keep in mind, what, some of these items, too, may be of value to the contractor as well. So that's why I prefer we need to put it in writing, council's desires.
Your honor. I'm wondering if, it sounds like, if I can talk, tell you back what I think I'm hearing, is that we need a general provision, provision enough that's clear in writing that you're talking about, but you need some flexibility possible also, don't you, on, on certain items, or, you know, if something comes up? Does, can we designate a staff to, can it be flexible enough, or is it just a blanket salvage?
No, there's a certain degree of flexibility, but if, per this item, if, you know, whoever provided some of these pictures and everything, I would say it could be handled in much of the same manner, walking through whatever groups, and walking through, and start identifying, taking a picture, and noting what specific items we are referring to. That would probably be handled best.
Okay. And that would be under two, that would be under the addendum, is that what you're saying? And could you talk, explain again, the, the, like it says, location, quantity, manner, delivered to the owner? Would be responsible for giving those items back to the city?
The contractor would be.
Sure.
If it was issued in denim, they acknowledge it, and once they begin, if awarded, they would, we'd do a pre-con walkthrough, identify these items.
Sure.
And perhaps representatives with StanTech or whatever would walk through and start reviewing all these items, and, yes, this item has to be removed, packaged up, palletized, whatever you may desire, and delivered to a determined site for the city.
Your honor, could I ask, follow up? So, correct me if I'm wrong, but under option two, to satisfy use of some of that property, my guess would be it's gonna drive the price of the, the bid? From a couple reasons, maybe they want it, the contractor, or, I mean, that's more detailed work than just taking care of it and disposing it, but I know there's a benefit to that, because their costs are gonna maybe potentially go down, but I think, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would think that that would mean our bid price is gonna go up, would it not?
It's hard to quantify that, but I would suggest things that have to be, take particular more labor-intensive will drive your prices up, per se, versus what's gonna be really used as heavy equipment on a normal seizure. It's hard to quantify, I couldn't quite, it depends on how large the list is.
I mean, taking a clock off the wall, sorry, your honor, if I may. Taking a clock off the wall, obviously, probably isn't gonna be that big of a deal, but some of that stuff is, I don't think it's more detailed.
I would say one in particular, you know, I'd have witnessed it myself, the purple glass from the tunnel Skyway, that would take some time to get that removed.
Is there a way, yeah, Jim, go ahead.
Brian, the addendum that you're gonna have with this stuff on it, wouldn't that have an added cost to it, so we could see what, what the cost would actually be for that addendum to take all these things out?
Well, and I noted in the memo here, but that's, it depends really on how big the list is, but that's part of the design contingency and advertisement, but it depends on the list. It might have some extra costs I don't have.
Your honor, if I could?
Is there a way to, is there a way to do like a add, add deduct, if you will, so we can see a side by side, and then also?
That's what, your honor, that's what council member Fish was, I think, referring to, is, is an add alternate, and getting the specific price for what that would add to the bid. The addendum, if we issue an addendum, that is changing what we're looking for in the bid.
That, that doesn't do anything to the, so, so what, what I would like to see is an overall bid, and then what it would cost to take these items out as add.
Well, what the administrator's referring to, yes, that add alternate will cost more money, because we're gonna have to redevelop a proposal form, and perhaps get more specific, because the contractors are gonna have to take a little bit closer look at some of these items and how they're affixed, and what those costs would be for a lump sum each, or however that's amended through the contract. That's, that's another manner as well, if you want, because that's the only way to answer your question, Mr. Ernestson, is, yes, what are these actual costs? Per the market.
It would just be nice to know, because some of the things, maybe we can, that won't drive the cost, and other things would, so maybe we can come to some agreement in the middle, but it'd be nice to know.
It, it's gonna cost us a lot more. We're already in this process. We've already delayed it once. This is gonna cost our city time, people time, I mean, it's, I don't know, I didn't even look at the list, what it was, really is, but it's gonna take, they gotta come back, look at it, go through it, they're gonna raise that bid up, and norm, I mean, that's gonna be a lot. I mean, some of that stuff is gonna take some time to get down. And I just firmly believe that do nothing, let them deal with the contractor themselves if they want something. That's what we should be doing. That's a position we should take.
Just one question, Anthony. Do we have an idea, so in order to do the add deduct, as Jim mentioned, that would actually reissue the bid, is that correct? So that, there's a?
That'd be hounded through an addendum as well, correct.
It'd be through an addendum.
They'd have a different proposal form, and probably some material specifications.
There's a cost associated with that?
Yes, and that, in that level of, it depends on the list again.
Sure.
At that level, I would say, yeah, there'd be a pretty good amount of time to prepare, revise all that.
I was gonna, I, I agree with Scott. I think we're, we're kind of, we're in a process, and, you know, as you say, we, we add this some to it, then they're gonna change the price. But I wonder equally, off this list, is there some of these items that aren't, as you say, of quite value to the contractor, that we could remove prior to actually demolition? I mean, like, as Justin said, if it's a clock off the wall, you know, can we do that with kind of city staff to take that clock off the wall, or if it's a plaque? You know, some of the, some of those simple things like that, but I, I agree, trying to actually take a piece out of a tunnel is, is going to be expensive to do. As much it would be nice to do.
And if I can speak to that, there is a, there's a fine line, too, and we talked about perhaps using, utilizing city staff, what would get you past the liability items as well. The only, the main reasoning for going through the contract for grant reimbursement purposes, granted, I don't think removing some of these non-fixed or readily available items, I don't think that would pay, perhaps take too long of staff time, and we could start there. Chalkboards, everything, too, as well. I think that's probably something we could take in consideration.
Bill, did you have something to add?
I just had a question. I'm kind of gonna think out loud, but I'm curious, how much of the stuff that they're interested is actually in, in the parts that we're currently looking at? Because Phase One is some tunnels, but others is like that steel building and maybe Building 11, which, if I recall, there's probably not much in there, so how much of this stuff is even in the current proposal?
From what I've seen in the pictures and everything, that was, the premise of the tour was Phase One.
Phase One.
We didn't, we, we didn't, yeah, I would have to say, and I can recognize some of the stuff, yeah, from Building Two, the administration moving next to RTC, so. There was not, the tour was pretty much confined to the project limits.
Your honor, I got one question again. If we, if the city salvages this, and the guy probably, don't we have to put that on a bid because it's public property? Is that something we, remember, we've talked about this before through different things, that, here we go again, I mean, is it something that if somebody wants, well, I want that, too, and then you, now you get into this? I, I don't.
Right, but if it has value?
There you go.
That's the question, and we don't know if there's value. If there's value, then perhaps the municipal contract law applies, it applies to purchases and sales.
Historical society, because it's a like agency?
Twenty-five thousand dollars in value, then you're maybe obligated to go out for quotes, as to who would provide, you know, a quote for these items. Although the city is authorized to make donations to historical societies and artistic organizations.
Yeah, there you go.
Purpose doctrine, so it's one of those, those, those unknown questions that you're kind of presenting. When it comes to donations to those types of organizations, the statute says money. And it doesn't necessarily say personal or property, although I think we could perhaps make the argument for that. But I mean, the, the, the issue here that I see is the municipal contract law that may come into play if this, if these items have value. And so we can avoid all of that with these organizations going directly to the contractor.
Just, your honor, just go to the do nothing, let that org, let them go after the contractors, and probably more than happy to let them come in there, as long as they understand it and they can come to it. Leave us out of it.
Well, and if I can add, too, the, the unique thing with the demolition projects, that's essentially what you're doing, is assigning the salvage property rights to the contractor to remove and dispose of properly. And that's kind of the unique thing with demolition projects. It's been common, some of these interest parties can work out with the contractor. Previous projects I've done when it comes to demolition, I get them in touch with the project manager and let them make any accommodations they can. But, like I said, need to stress that the city, you know, if they can't reach any reasonable, we can get, we can always somewhat discussions, but it's pretty tough to go on a contractor.
And how about that in coordination with, you had mentioned some of those, that low-hanging fruit easy stuff that we could, I mean, could staff, you know, some of that stuff, I don't think it would be that much of a burden to, to, to allow to go in and get some, out of the administrative wing, for example, clock off the wall and chalkboard, I think that that's not too much of a, that's not an unnecessary burden for the staffer.
Again, what does that worth? That clock might be worth a lot of money to somebody.
Again, your honor, we're gonna spend staff time, I mean, we're gonna send two, four guys up there doing that, I mean, that's staff time to be charged against the project, so I mean, it's just, we're better off do nothing, let them deal with it if they want it, be done with it, out of our hands.
Other thoughts? We'll wrap this conversation up.
The only question I have as far as materials and not necessarily what's going to nonprofit or whatever, is, when this is all said and done, if we can go through the phases that we are, there's gonna probably be some kind of a museum or some kind of a memorial for this facility. Has the city ever even thought of just before each phase, going through there, and not large items, but things that can be removed easy that have some historical value to that building, being just salvaged and stored until possibly a, you know, facility that, like that one we wanted to give to, Scott Kwame was interested in. Something, you know, where we end up, we're having a building when it's all said and done, and we can go back and say, we have pieces from this whole facility that'll show the people a little bit of a history on this, and not things that take a lot of time to take down or a lot of money to do. But, you know, when we're going through each phase, you know, just have somebody go through the buildings, maybe from the historical society, or can maybe pinpoint items that are gonna say, hey, these are things maybe we'd like to save.
All right, is there, does anyone have a motion? If not, I guess we're just gonna leave it as?
I'll make a motion. Do we go do, do nothing?
I think we don't need a motion.
Sure, well, if you want to.
Well, do we just leave it as is?
You can take a motion that, that the directing staff, not to take any further action on this.
Scott, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. There's no, yeah, thank you, Brian. There's no new business. I do not believe there's any miscellaneous announcements unless someone has some, has one for us. If there's not? Oh, yeah, okay, did you wanna? Thursday, Thursday and Friday garbage and recycling routes picked up on Wednesday. Which reminds me, it's Thanksgiving this week, so I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving, and spend some time with your family. And with that, we will adjourn to a closed meeting for threatened litigation.
Before, did you already adjourn?
I haven't adjourned.
I, I was talking to the mayor of Ely at this coalition, and he said when they lost something from Ely that was important, the council had formed a resolution stating their, their opinion and, and how they believed, and I, I believe that, I would like us to do that as far as Target. I believe we should make a statement that we think, you know, Target is maybe misreading our, our future direction and what's hap, what could be happening, and maybe you could help, help us do that. But I, I think we should come out as a council stating that we opposed it, and we oppose it, we would have liked to have a meeting, and we think that they, you know, that Fergus is going in a positive direction, just also.
Geige together for next?
We will, and we do have that, that, we do have that language, but yeah, it's a very good point, Rod, and, and we'll put that on the agenda, and we'll have the language exactly how it's been presented to the different offices, to the governor's office, to Target, the representatives both at the state and the federal level, so.
Know that, know that we're working on that and doing everything we can.
And with that, we'll be adjourned. We're not gonna come back after this session.